Good evening, we have returned to open session at 6:05. Our attendance will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag by Isaac Cabrera, Northern Elementary School student.
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Close session report, I have a report in here and number, item number one. On emotion by Donna Freeman and second by Agnes Gonzalez, Board of Education approved the employments of Christina Canales in the position of Assistant Principal with effective date of December 1st, 2021. The votes of the board was as follow. Carrie Chan, yes. Donna Freeman, yes. Gun, Agnes Gonzalez, yes. David Malkin, yes. Eric Vanegas, the motion approved. Okay, the next item on the, on a motion of Eric Vanegas and a second by Donna Freeman, the Board of Education approved the dismissal of employee number QP9777581 from all district employment effective November 19, 2021. The vote of the board was as follow. Carrie Chan, yes. Donna Freeman, yes. Agnes Gonzalez, yes. David Malkin, yes. Eric Vanegas, yes. Motion is carried. Number three, on a motion by Donna Freeman and a second by Eric Vanegas, the Board of Education approved the separation agreement with employee number TD7020087, which includes the employees resignation from all district employment. The vote of the board was as follow. Carrie Chan, yes. Donna Freeman, yes. Agnes Gonzalez, yes. David Malkin, yes. Eric Vanegas, yes. Motion carries. Number four, on a motion by Eric Vanegas and a second by Agnes Gonzalez, the Board of Education approved the separation agreement with employee number HJ2171654, which includes the employees resignation from all district employment. The vote of the board was as follow. Carrie Chan, yes. Donna Freeman, yes. Agnes Gonzalez, yes. David Malkin, yes. Eric Vanegas, yes. Motion carries. And five, on a motion of Eric Vanegas and a second by Donna Freeman, the Board of Education approved the separation agreement with employee number AY7417424, which includes the employees resignation from all district employment. The vote of the board was as follow. Carrie Chan, yes. Donna Freeman, yes. Agnes Gonzalez, yes. David Malkin, yes. Eric Vanegas, yes. Motion carries. Item six, on a motion of Eric Vanegas and a second by Agnes Gonzalez, the Board of Education approved the suspension agreement with employee number QZ0116319, which includes the employees resignation from all district employments. The vote of the board was as follow. Carrie Chan, yes. Donna Freeman, yes. Agnes Gonzalez, yes. David Malkin, yes. Eric Vanegas, yes. Motion carries. Okay. Okay, so we have a correction when I'm number six. Number six, on the motion of Eric Vanegas and a second by Agnes Gonzalez, the Board of Education approved the separation, suspension agreement with employee number zero, employment number QZ0116319. The vote of the board was as follow. Carrie Chan, yes. Donna Freeman, yes. Agnes Gonzalez, yes. David Malkin, yes. Eric Vanegas, yes. Motion carries. Thank you. And as the board recognition next there, I will return to Dr. Mitchell, please.
Perfect, thank you. This evening is my pleasure to welcome Northern Elementary School. I'm sorry, before Northern Elementary School, we're going to do a recognition of the Family Resource Center. The Family Resource Center is celebrating their 25th anniversary and we have Miriam Kim here to share some information about our Family Resource Center with the board and our community.
Good evening, thank you. Thank you Board President Chan, Board members, Dr. Mitchell and Cabinet. I will try to very briefly encapsulate the amazing work that has been coming out of the Family Resource Center for the last 25 years. I just have a few slides here that I'd like to share. So, the Family Resource Center got its start back in 1996 and that was a vision of some people who came together who saw that there were some true needs in our community and that these needs were increasing every single year. It started off with some important beginning goals such as the ones you see right here, access to health and dental services, alternatives to gang involvement, increased communication between school and community and a variety of resources to empower our families and our parents. The beginning part was really to remove those barriers so we can ensure that students were in school, having them find a place if they were toothache, they couldn't get vision support if they weren't feeling so well, allowing them to go beyond those barriers to be in classroom to receive important instruction. The growth continued over the years with these outstanding partnerships and you can just read the whole list and that's just some of the partnerships that have been created over the last 25 years. And because of this, our families and students have access to increased healthcare, a variety of school supplies that we give out every single year, not just at the beginning of the school year but throughout the school year as needed and a variety of holiday events. I'm sure many of you have heard what we've done for our Thanksgiving baskets, what we do with Adopt and Shop and just today, we gave out nearly 242 turkeys to families for next week's Thanksgiving. Additionally, we have community engagement with our monthly food distribution. Especially during COVID with the food insecurities, families have struggled to bring and find food for their tables. So in partnership with the Sutie Foundation, every month, the second Monday, we get together and we pass out fresh produce, fruits, vegetables, canned goods. Obviously, right now it's in a drive-through service and continues to be due to COVID regulations, but in the past, as you can see in some of those pictures, we would go through the cafeteria at Via Corte and families would be able to come through with their bags and baskets and get the foods that they knew needed. I know Mr. Malkin, you have helped us greatly in many of these distributions. We appreciate your support. Another thing, if you look at that picture right down there with our security, that's something we came up together with our security. We give them backpacks if they happen to notice a student that might be in need. They don't have to wait for us. If a security officer, safety officer sees them, they can just pass it out as well. Another thing that we have grown through the Family Resource Center is supporting the mental health needs. If we look at what's happened over the COVID time, you can see that there's a tremendous increase in need for mental health supports. So we have created partnerships with those supports and resources that you see there like Children's Bureau, Masonic Youth, Foothill Family. We also take in Masters of Social Work interns from the various universities that you see right there. And in this picture, you see one of our licensed clinical social workers, Ms. Susan Alvaro, working with the interns from those universities who then go into our schools to provide that first tier, first level of mental health support. We have taken on thousands of referrals for mental health, supporting all of our students and we are really excited that we now have three licensed clinical social workers to support our students. In this next one, you will see some of the pictures that I have referred to and some of the many events that we've done such as the Heart and Soul that takes place every February as we look to support our students who are in need of new shoes, socks. We also have our Adopt and Shop. You can see the festive picture right there with Santa. Santa loves the FRC, so he came. And so, all of these things with all of these partnerships, they all take place through and with the Family Resource Center. And again, it is a work of the heart. So gathering and working with the different agencies to find all of these supplies with all of the community members to find these resources. One of the things that has been really a fantastic opportunity for our high school seniors or senior dreams, for those students who are maybe not able to afford some of those graduation items. So we work with them, we identify those students and we help them out so they can get senior portraits or other things that they need to really commemorate their senior year. And like that last bullet says, everything in between. The next slide is one of the newest but most exciting adventures out of the Family Resource Center and that's the College Connect Program. One of the sessions is actually happening right now at Nogales High School. We have been working since three years ago with the three high school, really working with our students that promise. So our senior students and helping them with every aspect of the college application, starting with the essays to the application portion, to guiding them through the financial aid portals. All of that can be very confusing and so we have created a group of people with some expertise who walk hand in hand with our students of promise, making sure they get everything handled to turn in their applications on time. So far, I don't want to jinx it, I'm going to knock on wood. I know Dr. Mitchell's shaking, but we do have 100% success rate. And so all of our students that we've helped have all gone on to a major four-year university and these again are students that promise. So we are very, very proud of all of their efforts. And right now, we are helping 108 seniors from Roland, Nogales and Santana. And so the last picture, it's pre-COVID, that's why there are no masks, but these are the difference makers that you'll see coming and working with the Family Resource Center and all of you, so we're very thankful. And this is our 25th anniversary and I want to recognize Mayor Bill DeMuro and Sally Chen who are here. There are fabulous employees from the FRC. So, thank you everybody for your continued support.
Ms. Kim, could you go to the front as well? So on behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to recognize the Family Resource Center and their 25 years of service to our community.
Okay, let's move to the next items, report. Northern Elementary School Principal Esther Garcia along with the students Isaac Capera, Isaac Cobian and Brisha Garcia will provide a brief report highlighting their scores.
Hopefully, I'm able to navigate this well. Good evening Board President, Mr. Chen, Vice President, Ms. Friedman, Members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Mitchell, Cabinet, the RUSD community. My name is Mrs. Garcia and I'm the very proud principal of Northern Elementary School. Thank you for this opportunity to highlight the great work happening. Let me see if this is work. I'm not real handy with this, there we go. With us this evening, we have Mrs. April Minette Galindo, she's our sixth grade teacher. And we have some of our sixth grade students, Isaac Obian, Brisa Garcia and Isaac Cabrera. So. I'd like to thank Mr. Isaac Cabrera for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. And as you know, this is our second year diving into Reader's Workshop and just, we continue to learn and grow together as a strong staff. Our staff works towards differentiating support and meeting our students at their level during workshop time, whether it's through graphic organizers, small group intervention or one-to-one assistance. For example, we have a student here, this is one of the beauties of workshop that our students are able to find their voice and share their voice through their own writing. And since we're fortunate enough to be back in person, we are able to highlight their great work. All of our writers are able to celebrate in person now and this is one example of fifth grade class this year already conducted their celebration where students were able to read their best work as writers. And this is another creative example where students were able to select their best narrative and this is Mrs. Minette Galindo's class and they were able to type it up in this padlet. And April is going to go ahead and share. I can quickly.
I would totally mess that up. All right, good evening, President Chen, Members of the Board, Dr. Mitchell, Members of the community, thank you for allowing us to have the opportunity to share some of the great things that we're doing at Northam. As Ms. Garcia said, my name is April Galindo. I'm one of the sixth grade teachers at Northam Elementary and today I just kind of wanted to share a little bit of some of the things that we're doing in Reader's Workshop. So, our students and staff are super excited to be back in campus, in the classroom. While there have been some challenges, we're all doing our very best to work together and navigate this new way of learning. One of the best things about being back in school, on campus, in person is being able to see the students collaborate and work together and just seeing that overall joy of learning come back into the classroom. One of the parts that my students have expressed that they enjoy the most is our celebrations when we finish up a unit in either Reader's or Writer's Workshop, we celebrate. So after all the work that we have been doing, learning strategies, learning to be the best reader that we can be, students get the opportunity to create and build something to share with the rest of their students and their, or sorry, the rest of their classmates and their teachers. One type of celebration that we did in sixth grade to celebrate the end of our deep study of character unit is students were able to use Animoto to create book trailers for some of the books that they enjoyed reading over that unit. The students really enjoyed using this new tool and being creative and sharing it with their classmates. And in fact, some of our students even took the initiative to move one step forward and start writing their own books, including there are quite a few students in the classroom that are collaborating together and writing their very own narrative fiction story together. So I'm going to share one example of one of our book trailers with you. So that was one of the book trailers by one of my students, Estrella. There were lots of other fabulous ones, of course, but we don't have all the time in the world to share everything. I hope we, I wish that we did. On the next slide, you can see some pictures of another celebration in a third grade classroom where the teacher is bringing the students together and having them share all of the things that they did in that unit and just bringing out that joy in reading, which I think was something that was really missing when we were in distance learning. Here you can see a collage to your left is an introduction to third grade Reader's Mystery Unit. This was a fun way for students to become engaged and ready for the next unit. So the teacher set up a mock crime scene in the back of her classroom and students, students conducted an investigation on who they thought tore up the bookends based on evidence, alibis and a list of suspects. The investigation even gave students the opportunity to get ready for an opinion writing and citing evidence and an argument for that evidence. Also, teachers like Ms. Hernandez in the middle, we've been able to have the opportunity to actually conference with our students, one-on-one, in partnerships, in groups. And then of course, teachers like Ms. Gamboa to the right, who is continuing to work on honing in on those skills of conducting a mini lesson with her students. Now I'd like to go ahead and introduce Brisa Garcia, who's going to share a little bit of student reflections about workshop this year.
Good evening, my name is Brisa Garcia and we've been able to capture some student reflections on workshop and why we like it. First is mine and then is my classmate Gabriel. To me, workshop helped me to be a better reader because I've been able to read 40 or 50 pages in a chapter book for 30 minutes. I think that's good because the books I read are big and there are so many pages in it with lots of words. It also helps me read a bit faster in my mind. My reading has changed because I used to read a little, little chapter books and I'm reading better chapter books and I think that's a big improvement.
What I like about workshop is that we get 30 minutes individually for every lesson. So we get like 30 minutes for reading and writing. Sometimes we get some like extra minutes, which I like. I feel like it has helped me grow as a reader and writer because every le, or before, every lesson, she gives us a mini lesson, which teaches us like how to cover things better. She also gives us a paper, so it gives us like some advice on how to cover things better and how to explain stuff better. My favorite part in workshop is probably the mini lesson because it, so I can know things as my future self. So like if I have to cover a story or my own writing, I know like what to do. Since, since the start of workshop, I feel like my reading and writing has changed because of my reading, I, I've been starting to write longer and like add more details. And for my reading, I feel like it has evolved because I've been starting to read longer, like more than 30 minutes and I've been open to new genre.
Good evening, my name is Isaac Obian and I am Northern Elementary School President. Besides workshop, strengthening our reading and writing skills, we continue strengthening our, we continue strengthening our behave, our, our positive focus on behavior and the way of the night.
Good evening, my name is Isaac Cabrera, Vice President of Northam Elementary School. Today I'd like to talk about PBIS points. PBIS points are given to students that show the way of the night. If you get these points, you'll be able to purchase items in our PBIS store.
And just a little more on Northern Elementary staff and all the powerful work we're doing. Our staff is addressing equity and access through systematic targeted intervention through our two intervention teachers, Mrs. Marlene Martino and Mrs. Sofia Hayderi. And we're also focusing on restorative community building practices through community circles, whether with staff or with students and that's with our Equity and Access TOSA, Mr. Ravina. Last but not least, I'd like to thank everyone in attendance, but also Mrs. Minette Galindo, Mr. Isaac Obian, Ms. Brisa Garcia and Mr. Isaac Cabrera for positively presenting on the wonderful things happening at Northam.
Thank you Principal Marcia, thank you for your report, for sharing the information. Excellent, outstanding, thank you. Thank you everyone from Northam. Okay, next item, Dr. Mitchell, Superintendent's Report.
Perfect, thank you very much. So, I'd like to share with the board and our community, the holidays are here and as a district, we have a long history of supporting one another. The Family Resource Center, which you heard about this evening, through the supportive generous donations from employees and community partners have organized, providing our RUSD families in need with turkeys and grocery carts for a thing, for a Thanksgiving meal. We also invite our community to help support our annual holiday gift basket program in conjunction with the Rotary Club that provides holiday meals to 125 of our families and/or to support our Adopt and Shop program as a sponsor. Last year Adopt and Shop provided holiday gifts and joy to 118 families that included 232 of our students. The health and safety of our staff and students and community is a priority for our district and to that effort, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health and the East Valley Health Community Centers are hosting vaccine clinics for children five and above as well as adults and for those interested in booster shots. Tomorrow and Saturday at select Roland Unified sites, we are hosting and sharing our facilities with the community. The, it's at Hurley Elementary from three to six tomorrow and the East Valley Clinic next to Via Corte from three to seven tomorrow. Also on Saturday at Roland High School from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM and again at the East Valley Clinic next to Via Corte Elementary from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. The district has also expanded hours for COVID-19 testing with our testing partners, the COVID Clinic, which is located here at the district office. The testing is available for RUSD staff, students and The testing is available for RUSD staff, students, and their families and can be tested Monday through Friday from 11:30 to 6:00 PM. Registration in advance is required and the link is on our district webpage. We are looking for two community members to serve on the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee to help build our USD's future. A member of a Taxpayers Association and a business community member are the, the particular positions that are needed. The application deadline has been extended to December 31st. It's also my pleasure this evening to introduce to the board two employees new to their position and one new to the district. First, I'd like to welcome Wendy Lassard as our Coordinator of Instructional Support. Wendy has started and has been actively engaged in the work that we're doing in the district for the last few weeks. And she was formally introduced to our district leadership team yesterday. And at this time, it's my pleasure to introduce to the community and to the board, Wendy Lassard, would you like to come forward and share a few words? I'm sorry about that. I'll start.
One more time.
Good evening again, Mr. Chen, members of the board, Dr. Mitchell and Cabinet. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be part of this district. In my first two weeks here in Roland, I have felt incredibly welcomed and I'm really excited to be part of this team. I'm so looking forward to supporting the schools and the families in this community and learning from and with all of you. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you and welcome. Next, it's my pleasure to introduce Christina Canales, who was appointed this evening by the Board of Education to the position of Assistant Principal and she'll be serving at Santana High School. Welcome Christina and congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
It is a privilege and an honor to stand here before you in acceptance of the Assistant Principal position at Santana. And I would like to thank you for the opportunity, Board, Cabinet, Dr. Julie Mitchell and Minister Greg Perez for this opportunity as well as having the confidence in me as a leader. And I hope to continue to develop the relationships with the staff as well as families and the community and our students. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Perfect. Congratulations. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
You're announcing you have three in place. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. And the next student report and the first school is Nogadas. Pedro Navarez, Nogadas High School, ASP sophomore Vice President will provide a report. Pedro.
Good evening. My name is Pedro Navarez and as previously mentioned, I'm the sophomore Vice President at Nogadas High School. Today I would like to share some of Nogadas' most impactful moments and accomplishments from the past month and a few upcoming events that we as a school are looking forward to. To begin, our freshman class held a sock drive where they collected 88 pairs of brand new socks to donate to the Family Resource Center. Our fellow nobles understood the need and stepped up to help our community. But this was not enough for our freshman class. They understood the importance of helping the community during the holiday season and that's why this past Tuesday, they started their next big project, the canned food drive. Their goal is to collect at least 300 cans, which will also be donated to the Family Resource Center. After four days, we have already collected 60 cans, so we're confident that we will reach our goal. Following the theme of giving to others, our sophomore class held the first blood drive of the year on the, on Tuesday, November 9th, where they were able to work with the American Red Cross to achieve their goal of giving 45 pints, pints of blood to the community. This is equivalent to about 130 saved lives. The next blood drive is scheduled to be on February 24th and we expect to have more participants since more students will be eligible for the height and weight requirements. In order to raise awareness for breast cancer, the ASP Culture Committee hosted a student-driven door decorating contest from October 18th to the 22nd to highlight the one in eight women that will suffer from breast cancer in their lifetime. The theme Rise Against Breast Cancer sparked creativity in the minds of students and teachers alike who spend time after school creating the decorations and posters for the door. It was a difficult decision to select the winner, but they were eventually announced on Friday, October 22nd, which was also the day of our tactical cancer home football game as well as our senior night. During this night, we recognize our senior band, cheer and football members. For band, we recognized 27 seniors. For cheer, we recognized 17 seniors. And for football, we recognized 16 seniors. Speaking of our band, our word-winning noble regiment and color guard made a comeback to competitive parades at the Laura Banner View in Anaheim, California, where they were able to take home their first place in their division. And they are also hopeful that they will win this weekend's competition in Arcadia. We wish the best of luck to regiment and color guard. In addition, our esteemed National Honor Society, with the help of the math club, were able to start a tutoring program after school every Monday through Thursday from three to four PM in our library. Our nobles are taking advantage of this opportunity to not only learn and earn community service hours, but to also help fellow nobles succeed in their math courses. We are sure that our nobles will be ready for finals. Our Nogadas Drama Company held their first play of the year, the Great Mythology Olympaganza, on November 4th and 5th with heavy support on both days. The laughs and cheers reflect the hard work put on by the drama company as well as advisors. Personally, I am excited to see what the drama company will perform next. Our clubs have also been very active and have brought not only performances and fundraisers, but also lunchtime activities. Our folklorical group hosted a Dia de los Muertos event with performances and activities for those attending. During lunchtime, we had the, we had performances, scavenger hunts, and other activities where students participate for the opportunity to earn prizes and PBIS points. Actually, this week we had our I Am Thankful mural or tree where students would be able to write down the things that they are thankful for according to the color of the leaf. Pink symbolizing a person they are thankful for, orange an experience, yellow a skill, green a memory, and purple a place. This way, we get more diverse answers and we make students reflect on the different things that they can be thankful for. When Halloween season came around, our spirit committee put together a spirit week to get the students in the spooky spirit. Monday was wear red for red ribbon day. Tuesday was out with the old and with the new. We're seniors dressed up as senior citizens and underclassmen dressed up as toddlers. Wednesday, we had our, on Wednesdays, we wear pink day in honor of breast cancer awareness month. Thursday, we had our Halloween class colors. Where seniors wore black, juniors were purple, sophomores were orange, and freshmen were green. We also couldn't let our staff get away, were encouraged to wear yellow. The best day was Friday, where students were able to wear their costumes and participate in a costume contest. We had individual and group participants. Students got to select the winner for the teacher section and teachers decided the student winners. It was interesting to see the creativity of students and we're looking forward to more costume contests in the future. As I am approaching the end of my report, I would like to highlight athletic achievement at Nogadas. On October 14th, our girls volleyball team completed their season as the Montney League champs, which is the first in Nogadas history. They were also able to move up to the second round of CIF playoffs. Our girls tennis team also had a fantastic season, finishing first in the league, which made them league champs. Our cross-country team also had a great season, which made some of them eligible through the CIF preliminaries. Now that our winter sports have started their seasons, we are excited to cheer them on and are ecstatic that our boys soccer team is on the watch list for the CIF Southern section. On behalf of the Associate Student Body at Nogadas, I would like to thank Roland staff and administrators for their unwavering support in student affairs because without it, none of these events would have been possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Pedro. The next, we received a report from NIA, Roland High School, ASB Speaker of the House.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Mitchell, and members of the audience. My name is Annie Ee and I am the Speaker of the House, Roland High School. Beginning with a recap of events that had happened through the last board meeting, October started with our annual Character Count Spirit Week from October 18th to 22nd. During this week, students dressed in different colors to represent the different character traits. In addition to dressing up, there are activities during lunch to promote these traits. We also had a red ribbon spirit week from October 25th to 29th. Monday was Team Up Against Drugs. Students wore the fair spirit jerseys. Tuesday was Way Goodbye to Drugs, dressing in beach attire. Wednesday was Sock and Drugs, wearing mismatched or crazy socks. Thursday was Make Drugs a Thing of the Past, dressing in 70s to 90s attire. And Friday was Scare Off Drugs, dressing in Halloween costumes. This spirit week saw a love of engagement, especially in terms of beach clothing and the Halloween costumes. During lunch, our community caring class organized a variety of games to play such as the water balloon toss and finishing the lyrics. On Halloween, we conducted our annual Halloween costume contest at lunch, which was judged by our principal, Mr. Brenner, and one other staff member. We had great participation from the staff as well as students in Halloween costumes. This year's costumes include SpongeBob, Surgeons, and Facearts, among other costumes. Roll Kindness Day was celebrated on Friday, November 12th with random acts of kindness being performed by various clubs on campus such as Kindness Rocks and Kindness Co spreading out throughout the campus. Link Crew hosted an afternoon barbecue last Friday for all ninth and 10th graders. This event had free food and they played fun board games and long games. The senior November event was Senior Rec Night in the quad on November 2nd. This event was a night for seniors to just have fun. Seniors could play inflamables as well as playing ping pong, air hockey, and foosball. Roland's performing arts programs are going strong. We had a fall play, Voices 2000, on November 12th and the 13th. It was located in a new performing arts center. It was incredible to watch the visions of our theater students come to life. Students were so excited to be able to perform in this wonderful center. Our Roland High School Regiment is also doing fantastically well. Congratulations to our regiment for placing first last Saturday at the Western Band Association Competition at Tribeca High School in Class 2A. Good luck to them as they compete in their final competition for the 2021 season on Saturday. Choir Fall Competition season has also been successful as it competed in the last competition for the fall yesterday. Now for upcoming events, the Great American Smoke goes today. AC will be making different e-fliers and reposting them on our AC Instagram. This day is primarily intended to educate people about the dangers of smoking and to discourage them from doing so. Also, today ASP continued the monthly recognition of students who have been recognized by the Roland staff members for exemplifying one of the radio goals. Staff sent a postcard and a mail to the students to congratulate them for being a thinker, a communicator, or contributor during the month of October. At lunch, we distributed buttons, otter pops, and a free cheeseburger voucher to habit to each of these 160 students. Winter is coming up, so our Winter Spirit Week is coming this year. It is from December 6th to December 10th. Monday, it'll be twice a week before finals. Students will be wearing PJs. Tuesday is everything but a holiday mug. Students will be bringing anything except a holiday mug. In addition, AC will be giving out free hot chocolate. I'm so excited to see what the students are going to bring for this Spirit Day. Wednesday is tree toppers. Students will be wearing holiday hats and AC will be making headbands to give to, give to students. Thursday is snowed in. Students will be wearing ugly attire, ugly sweaters or winter attire. And Friday is as the New Year's come, students will dress and press and wear different New Year attire such as 2020 glasses and party hats. November and December continue to host service events for many of our clubs. To name a couple, Interact has begun their annual canned food drive and IBA continues to collect books for elementary schools, elementary school students. Our Roland High School dancing will perform in the first show on the 8th of December. The students are real excited to see them. Furthermore, on the 10th and 11th of December, our choir will perform its holly follies. They'll be singing a variety of holiday songs. Seniors will have their December senior event, a German movie in the Roland High School parking lot. It will be on December 6th at 6:30 PM and the movie is going to be The Elf. This should be a treat for seniors because it will allow them to unwind after submitting some other college applications. As for sports, fall sports have completed their season. In October, all fall sports had their senior nights recognizing each senior. Our girls tennis team advanced to the second round of CIF, losing in a tight match of 10 to eight. Our top doubles girls tennis duo also advanced to CIF and will be playing this Monday, November 22nd at Widdier Narrows. Boys and girls cross-country runners participated in the first round of CIF this past Saturday at Mount Sac. Winter sports are starting. All winter sports have begun their, their preparations and are starting to play their first games. Our girls basketball team is in the midst of the preseason and has been competing in a tournament this week. Additionally, our girls water polo team played the first game on Tuesday and won with the score of 17 to 13. Boys basketball are playing Nogadas tonight as we speak. Wrestling is hosting the first match tonight. Boys and girls soccer has postponed the first games, but will have the first game after Thanksgiving break. All winter athletes are excited to play their sports and students are very excited to be fans in a sense. Roland students are very excited about these upcoming activities and Thanksgiving break right around the corner. Seniors have been busy completing their college applications and are looking forward to a week off of school. I wish the board and the district staff a nice Thanksgiving break. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. The next Andrea Godado, Santana High School ASP member will provide a report.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Mitchell. My name is Andrea Godado and I'm here to share with you news from Santana High School. For the last few weeks, there have been many exciting activities for Santana students and staff. During the month of October, ASP handmade Halloween grams filled with stickers, treats, bubbles, and other fun Halloween accessories. We had enough to provide a special Halloween gram for all of the staff as well. During the week of October the 25th through October the 29th, we hosted a Halloween Spirit Week. On Monday, the 25th, students had a Marvel Monday where they could dress up as a superhero for the day. We saw many students and staff dress up in their favorite superheroes. Tuesday was Tropical Tuesday, and although the weather was a bit chilly, students still had a great time wearing colorful Hawaiian print shirts and lays. Wednesday was Wacky Wednesday, and a highlight of that day was seeing a student wear their hair in huge Liberty Spikes. For Throwback Thursday, many students got to choose their favorite decade dress-up ads. We had students dress up in outfits from, from the 70s all the way up to the very distant 90s and try their hand at styles they didn't get a chance to experience. On Friday of Spirit Week, we had a spooky Friday theme where students could wear their Halloween costumes. During lunch, we started Serve Wars, where all of the sixth period classes complete, competed against each other during lunch for the title of Serve Champion. Our first challenge was Amami Rap, and two students from Mistrich was sixth period, won their class the title of Serve Champions. Santana ASB is eagerly awaiting the next opportunity so that we can get the trophy for ourselves. During the month of October, ASP also handmade red ribbons and also handmade red ribbons for Red Rune Week and pink ribbons for our Breast Cancer Awareness Day. We made a total of 350 ribbons to give out to all students and staff who wanted one. The students at Santana enjoyed the ribbons and many of them still wear them on their backpacks today. Our focus for the rest of November is to continue planning our end of the semester activities and our holiday celebrations. Although Christmas is one of the most celebrated holidays during this time of year, ASP would also like to acknowledge and shine a light on the holiday celebrations and traditions of other religions and cultures. Our goal is to be inclusive so that, so that everyone in our campus feels welcome and seen. Starting our return from Thanksgiving break, we will be making our holiday grams and planning for our holiday festivities. The students of ASP would like to wish all of the board members and cabinet a happy and safe Thanksgiving break. We hope you enjoyed, we hope you enjoy your time off with your families and that you have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Before moving to the next item, thank you all the student representative. Again, and I know you have homework to do and you have a test to prepare, so you're welcome to stay if you need to get your homework to work and you may feel free to, to leave. And thank you again for your report. Okay, so next, the staff report. That will present to the Board of Education, the draft plan for the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant. Dr. Mitchell.
Perfect. Thank you. And this evening, Mr. Flores is going to share with the board just very brief information about the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant. And then we will have an opportunity for a public hearing on that item this evening. This is not an item that the board is making a decision or taking action on this evening. There'll be an opportunity at our next meeting to go through it in greater detail. I was gonna say Mr. Flores, but he walked out. There you go.
Laying our guests that there's available seats.
Board President Chang, Vice President Friedman, board members, Dr. Mitchell, Cabinet, and audience. Thank you for allowing me. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to provide a brief presentation on the district's Educator Effectiveness Block Grant Plan. I'd like to start by thanking Brian Huff and Corey Duran, who have led the charge on this grant. Without their leadership, I wouldn't be here tonight talking about this. I'd also like to thank Doctors Zamora for allowing Brian Huff lead these conversations in the Ed Services Team, as this has been a group effort by the Ed Services Team to making sure that there is alignment from what we are doing and how these funds can be spent to best meet the needs of our students. The Educator Effectiveness Block Grant is a program where school districts provide professional development opportunities and to promote educator equity, quality, and effectiveness. The allowable uses include coaching and mentoring, implementing programs for standard alignment instruction, developing strategies for social emotional learning, creating a positive school climate, implementing effective language acquisition programs for English learners, creating a new professional learning network, developing strategies to incorporate ethnic studies, and implementing strategies for early childhood education. The district is entitled to a total of $3,153,000 in one-time funds for this program that can be spent through the fiscal year 2526. The district proposed plan consists of three plan components. Staffing to provide professional learning related to effective standard-aligned instruction, creating a positive school environment, and practices to improve student well-being. Second component is training and professional development, also related to those three areas, and effective standard-aligned instruction, creating a positive school environment and practice to improve student well-being. And our third component is to diversify the teacher workforce. Again, these are the three components. And strategically, in our plan, we want to evaluate this year of all the positive things that we're doing with all the other funds that are brought forward with the support of the federal funds and the state funds, not to create more, but to see how what we're doing, making sure that it is working, and how to support what we are doing with these funds, with the people who are going to be implemented, who is our staff and our teachers. The next step for this plan is to implement or conduct a public hearing to receive input regarding how the funds should be spent, approve the plan at the next board meeting on December 9th, and to complete annual data and expenditure reports to the California Department of Education. Again, this year, this will be an annual evaluation of the funds, how they're being spent, and a very fluid to making sure that we're always supporting our staff with a proper staff development, to making sure to meet the needs of our students. And this is what our plan is, be very fluid, and the evaluation will be brought forward every year as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Dr. Mitchell, any comments this evening?
Yes, we do have comments this evening.
Okay, then, let me read the notes. "The public is welcome to provide comments to the board. Remarks are limited to three minutes unless extended or limited by vote of the board. A maximum of 20 minutes unless extended by the board is allocated for each subject discussed." The Brown Act Open Meeting Regulation regulates under which the board must operate, do not allow board members to comment on non-agenda items or information you may bring up, there are none on agenda. Additionally, no action can be taken. However, the board may give direction to staff following the comments." Dr. Mitchell? Okay. Okay, one, this is some. Okay, so how many we have now? Okay, great. Okay. First speaker, Patricia Cruz, please.
Hello, board members and Superintendent Mitchell. I am a parent here at Rollin High School. I've had, I have six kids, four of them who have graduated from here, and I have two that are currently here. This COVID pandemic has brought in about a lot of changes for staff and our students here, and I feel that there has not been enough training for the staff. For an example, like my student is an athlete at the high school and athletes have to be tested or they have to be vaccinated in order to play, in order to play for the following week. So my student athlete is not vaccinated. While she's waiting for direction from her coaches, they ask, who's vaccinated, raise your hand. Who's not vaccinated, raise your hand. These kids are being segregated, they're being singled out. Their medical shouldn't have to be exposed to everybody. I spoke into the coaches and asked them not to do that, to, you know, let us know so we can figure out something, so they're not segregated or they're not singled out. It is disheartening to hear that the coaches, the athletic director, the vice principal comments to these kids, tell them, just get your vaccine, it's easier. It's not up to the coaches, the athletic director, or the vice principal to make those decisions for our kids. Our kids are very well influenced. They believe that the teachers, since they have degrees, they know more than their parents. And they'd say, you know, it's just easier, let me just go get the vaccine. That should be a discussion that the parents and the students should be having and not the coaches or the vice principal or the athletic directors forcing our kids to make that decision for themselves without having the facts for themselves. So I ask that you please train the coaches, athletic directors, vice principals during these things so that this doesn't happen to any other students and they don't feel segregated. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Mitchell, could you just look into that and let the board know what can be done to prevent it? Thank you.
The next, Tricia Medrano.
Good evening, board. Hello. I am here to talk about the vaccine mandate, but I am not here to ask you to make or to pick one side. I'm asked, I'm actually here to ask you to stand up for choice. I'm also a product of the Rollin Unified School District, went to Shellen, Albrado, and Rollin High School. I am not an anti-vaxxer. I have five children, three of them have fully been immunized, two of them have not. Of the two, one of them had a vaccine injury in which we had to seek a professional to help us reverse or minimize those side effects, and I'm talking about immunization here. The other one is not vaccinated, she's three years old. She has a rare disease called Sturgewerber Syndrome. If you look it up, it includes abnormal capillaries in the brain. She has abnormal capillaries in two parts of her brain, her temporal lobe and her occipital lobe. So there are parents who are afraid that if they don't get their child vaccinated, that they can get ill, potentially death. I'm also afraid that if I vaccinate my child, that she can get ill and potentially die. So I'm not asking which one of us parents is right, because I believe we both are. What I am saying is please stand up for choice and the freedom to make that choice so that I don't feel like I have to do something to my daughter that I am afraid of. And in addition to that, I'm asking that if you do stand up for choice and show our kids how to fight for what's right, to go against the grain, to be leaders, because nothing that comes things that are hard are usually worth it, right? And so, one thing I do want to ask is, as board members, you hold a great position of leadership with one of the focuses of influence is being on community growth and well-being. And when I think of any branch of authority and the individuals representing it, I imagine people that are bold, courageous, and confident and assured in the value that you have to offer. Your leadership appeals to people's innate sense of security, survival, and assurance. And I want to leave with just this one quote by Henry David Thoreau. He once said, "If a man does not keep pace with his companions, perhaps it's because he hears a different drummer. Let him step to the music which he hears, however measured or far away." So please, I ask you to stand up for choice and know that we all are tired of divide. And if there's anything that we can agree on, I'm sure that it's time for unity. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jacqueline Gabriel.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jacqueline. I have many titles. I am a registered nurse, I'm a wife, but most important title of all is being called mom. I am a mother to six children and three of them attend Rollin Unified School District. We are asking Rollin Unified School District to not enforce these mandates. Please allow for medical freedom of choice. As a registered nurse, my children have followed infection prevention practices and follow the guidance of the school in mitigating the spread of COVID. I grew up here in Rollin Heights and I'm so lucky to have my children grow up here as well. Please do not take away the chance of them learning effectively, making memories with their friends, and basically just growing up and being a child. This is not about politics. For us, this is about being a parent and making our own choices about our children. Many of us are willing to remove our children if the district decides to implement this mandate. Please do not underestimate the love a parent has for their children because we will walk through fire to ensure the health, safety, and well-being of our children. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jonathan Gonzalez.
Well, I just wanted to come real quick. My name is Jonathan Gonzalez. I've lived in this community my whole life. I'm 41 years old, I'm a father of five children. And I'm here not to speak anti-vaccine, right, but I am pro-choice. And I honestly believe that the government has no right to tell us what to do with our children's bodies, right? With that said, what I've come to understand is we've lived in a country right now of great division. But this is one thing at this very moment that we can all come together and unite, unify, is for the well-being of our children. I've seen a lot of things. We see the internet, we see everything that we see, but we know one thing, our children, our bodies, our home, our truth. I've had the COVID. My son, my oldest son, right there, took care of me. He's just fine. We don't need people to tell us what we have to put in our children's body. That is unacceptable. And for the school to be influencing that, for schools to be discriminating against our children, that's a new form of prejudice. It is wrong. It is violating the Civil Rights Act of discrimination. And we ask the board, I come and ask the board, please, please stop this discrimination, stop this prejudice, stop manipulating our children and making them believe that they need something. They need this COVID vaccine when they do not. Our children are not sick, and no one has the right to tell our children that they are sick and they need this to heal them. So that's why I'm here today. It'll be my first time. I will continue on coming and I will bring many more people with me. I'm the first of many to come because it's not right. You know, they try to politicize this, all Trump supporters, all white supremacy, all this, none of that. This is about fathers and mothers wanting protection for our children. I stand with anybody who stands against the government telling us what to do with our children. Ronald Reagan once said that the government serves us. We do not serve the government. It is a vehicle that the American people drive, and we tell it where to go and in what direction we want it to go. And to this day, I was a young child when I heard that, and I believe that to this day. So I ask you, please, please, do what's right for our children and stop manipulating them. Thank you.
That's it, Jonathan Gonzalez Jr.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Gonzalez. I'm a student currently attending Jellicle Elementary. When my dad was sick of COVID, I helped him. I'm fine. Nothing happened to me. Through the whole time of COVID, since it started, I was only sick once for about three days. I was never sick ever since. Then, I don't think it's right that the government could make us put something in our body that we don't need or want. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kevin Hayakawa.
My name is Kevin Hayakawa. I've been a resident of Rollin Heights for over two decades, and I spent my entire K-12 educational career educated through RUSD. I care very deeply about the students and teachers of this district, many of whom were the same teachers that I had growing up and one who's sitting in this very room right now. I'm speaking to you tonight about the upcoming statewide COVID-19 vaccine mandates. And I'm really just here to dispel some misinformation that has unfortunately been circulating around our community lately. These vaccine mandates will not go into effect until the term after the vaccine receives full FDA approval. For children aged 12 through 17, the earliest this rule would go into effect is July 1st, 2022. And currently, for certain age groups, the COVID-19 vaccine is quote, "only authorized for, under emergency youth authorization" for ages 5 through 15, but this authorization itself, you know, requires very thorough testing and safety protocols. According to Senator Dr. Richard Penn, who is the chair of the Senate Health Committee, since the vaccine mandate was created by regulation instead of law, there must be a personal belief exemption clause. So children with approved exemptions will still be allowed to attend school, and they will not be forced into independent study. So parents do indeed have a choice. As a local school board, I understand that you do not have the power to override a statewide decision even if you wanted to. So it confuses me why we are all here tonight talking about these upcoming vaccine mandates. If members of the community are genuinely concerned about the statewide vaccine mandate, they should be lobbying their state assembly member, Philip Chen, their state senator, Josh Newman, or their state governor, Gavin Newsom. So why should children teens get vaccinated for COVID-19? Although it's true that children are at a lower risk of becoming severely ill with COVID-19 compared to adults, children can still be infected with the virus that causes COVID-19, get very sick from COVID-19, and have both short and long-term health complications from COVID-19, as well as spread it to others. Children with underlying medical conditions are more at risk for severe illness from COVID-19 compared with those that don't have underlying medical conditions. And children who get infected with the virus that causes COVID-19 can also develop serious complications like multi-system inflammatory syndrome or MISC, a condition where different body parts become inflamed. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I hope that you will.
Next speaker is Amy Urbian. Next speaker is Amy Urbian.
Good evening, President Chen's school board, Dr. Mitchell and Cabinet. I am Amy Urbian, president of the Association of Rowland Educators, which represents the 700 educators in this district. I want to thank the committee that is here tonight to voice their concerns about a vaccine mandate, which the district has not put in place for this school year. Our association also has a few members who do believe what you do about the vaccine mandate and have reached out to me. And I've explained to them that the district is following what state has ordered them to do, which is facts that our members are under a vaccine to turn in a vaccine or get tested weekly. I respect the concerns to the district about the issues of our members who are not in favor of the COVID vaccine. But I've also told those members to reach out to the state legislatures in California Public Health. As a government teacher, I always respect and appreciate dissent because that point of view matters. However, about 90% of our ARB members are vaccinated. And therefore, I also have to speak for that majority. Everyone has a choice on what to do, whatever decisions are made. This district will always offer the best education for our students as we did during virtual learning last year and what we're doing this year in person and serving our students on independent study. So there is always the choice. Last month, I came before the school board. And so we look forward, as an association, to work with the district as we began to open vaccine clinics in our district this past week. I am very proud to say we had AR members last week at No Galas, and we will be there again tomorrow and Saturday. One of our members who was volunteering at No Galas did say it was good to see grandparents, parents, and children getting their vaccine together. This provides another layer of protection for our community and our teachers who are in the classrooms. It is important for the health, safety, and welfare of our schools. Lastly, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And I've been visiting our schools, and I think our parents are looking forward to the week off. And I do also hope that the cabinet, and I highly recommend Dr. Mitchell, to take the week off too. So thank you again.
I do believe that we may have a virtual comment as well. Ms. Ward, can you verify? You don't?
No, you do not. They, we're okay.
Perfect. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, no more. All right. Okay, next, the public hearing, the public hearing. The purpose of a public hearing is to provide members of the public the opportunity to be aware of and to comment on the 2020 census data for the school district as presented by the district's demographer, Cooperative Strategies. The board intends to take action to maintain the current existing trustee area as originally approved in 2020. This original trustee area were developed with the most current census data available at the time, which was 2010. By law, when new census data is available every 10 years, the board must review and a new data to determine if the change in the trustee area is needed. If a district trustee area varied by 10% or more in population, the board is required pursuant to Education Code Section 5019.5 to adjust to the trustee area boundaries. Cooperative Strategies has advised the district that the current trustee area boundaries using the 2020 census data have a variance of 7%. Therefore, no change is being recommended to the current trustee area. Any members of the public who would like to provide input on the trustee area boundaries from which this to governing, governing board members will be elected from the invited to step forward in attending in person or raise your virtual hand if attending virtually. So we may call upon you. The public hearing open at 7:20.
There are any individuals in our virtual audience that are interested in addressing at this public hearing, you may raise your virtual hand.
Kevin, please.
Good evening. Hello, my name is, I'm still Kevin Hayakawa. And I just wanted to make two quick comments about the redistricting process. I'm not super familiar about how special our school districts on the local level, exactly what the governing principles are for drawing these boundaries. But I know that, you know, in talk of like congressional and, you know, state legislature, state legislative districts often speak about keeping communities of interest together, whether this might be separate ethnic or racial groups or having certain other, you know, commonalities that bring people together. And I just noticed that for trustee area one, I'm looking at, I think, slide five on this excellent presentation that was provided. Trustee area one has a populate, an Asian population of 49.6%. And I, you know, maybe just might request that this be redistricted into an Asian-majority district in order to ensure that that community is kept together and is able to elect its school board member of choice in the future. And separately, while I understand that the maximum variance is up to 10%, if I'm understanding that correctly. Trustee area two has a significantly smaller population than trustee area three. I think that's where the 7% is coming from. Now, I'm looking at slide one where the variance for trustee area one is negative 4%, while the variance of trustee area three is positive 3%, which is a difference of more than 1,500 people. So while it may be easy to preserve the status quo and just approve the maps as they are and keep them the same way, I'm asked you to consider those two requests, perhaps expanding trustee area one into an Asian-majority district and then moving. I apologize, these maps aren't colored that I have. So I'm not totally sure if trustee area two is next to trustee area three, but maybe moving some residents of trustee area three to trustee area two. Thank you.
Ms. Ward, do we have any virtual attendees to speak on this matter?
Yes, we have one raised hand by Christine McKee Barella.
Go ahead.
Ms. Barella, you can speak.
Ms. Barella, you can unmute and speak at this time to address the board during the public hearing. I see that you are still muted. Are you able to unmute?
Still muted. So any other, any virtual hands you see, or so we can?
There are no others. It's just she has been unable to speak. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's publicly closed at 7:24. Thank you. Okay, next, public hearing. This public hearing will be held pursuant to California Education Code Session 41480A to receive public input regarding the educator effectiveness plan as required for eligibility and consideration for the educator effectiveness grant. The educator effectiveness plan is composed of two goals. A professional practice goal, PPG, and the student learning objective, SLO, goal. These two goals work together in educator effectiveness assistance to connect ways that will strengthen professional practices for improving student outcomes. As a condition of receiving funds through the educator effectiveness grant, a school district shall develop, adopt a plan explaining the planned expenditure of funds, including the professional development of teachers and teachers, para-professionals, and classified staff. The plan shall be presented in public meeting of the Board of Education before its adoption in a subsequent public meeting. Any member of the public who would like to provide input on the development of the educator effectiveness plan is invited to step forward if attending in person or raise your virtual hand if attending virtually. So we may call upon you. The public hearing open at 7:26.
If there are any members in our virtual audience who would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand. Mr. Chen, we're seeing no speakers on this item.
Okay, then let's close the hearing. The public hearing closed at 7:27. Let's move to discussion item. Can I move? And at a second to adopt the resolution SO 21,2028. Maintain trustee area boundaries from which this district governing board members will be elected. Dr. Mitchell. Oh, they need a motion for proof the resolution SO 212208.
I'll move.
Donna, move.
I second.
And as a second discussion, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you. It's my pleasure this evening to have Angela here from Cooperative Strategies, our demographer, to share a little bit about the 2020 census and redistricting and answer any questions that the board has.
Evening, President Chen, members of the board, Dr. Mitchell, executive cabinet members. Again, my name is Angela Banuelos. I'm from Cooperative Strategies. I assisted with assessing the current trustee area boundaries compared to the 2020 census and the 2010 census data. I don't have a, oh, it's down here, I think. Okay, so we're gonna. So within our analysis, we noticed that there was a decrease of 1.7% of inhabitants within the school district boundaries. That is 1,830 people. And the total variance, again, for the current census is 7% compared to when you redistrict, when you actually transitioned to trustee areas, it was 5.4%. Significant changes was the decrease in trustee area number two. The most that they lost was 852. And notable increase was in trustee area number one with 220. So here we have a chart depicting the current demographics within the district. So a refresher on why we use total population. So total population is used to balance the amount of inhabitants by each trustee area, providing a nearly equal amount of people per area. And that's when the 10% variance comes in. It's the most populated, subtracting the least populated area. That would give you the variance. We noticed that the Asian protected class voter is at 45.4%. And the second largest protected class voters are the Hispanic Latino community at 44.2%. However, when we look at the table on the right, the 18 and over, and again, the total population includes children and citizens, non-citizens, just everyone who lives in the district, 18 and over, who can potentially become voters. You have 48.2% Asian and 41% Hispanic Latino. Now, when we look at the citizen voting age population, also known as the CVAP, another refresher on why we use the CVAP. The CVAP helps us identify communities of interest and allows us to not split those communities of interest or impair protected class voters from electing a candidate of their choice. Here, we notice that the largest protected class voter here is the 45.8% of the Asian population, followed by the second largest, which is the Hispanic Latino community at 39.3%. The census, the CVAP information is provided by the American Community Survey, which is a subdivision of the Census Bureau. Here we have a picture of your current trustee area. Trustee area one is in yellow, two is in green, three is the pink color, four is the blue, and five is the purple, followed by the actual breakdown by demographics within each trustee area. So if we notice, the current census population is 107,136, and the ideal size per trustee area is 21,427, again, bringing your total variance at 7%. However, some notable accomplishments that are presented on this table is that the, this scenario has five majority-minority districts where the CVAP is above 50%. The CVAP is what is, identifies a majority protected class voting area, also known as minority-majority areas. And so if we look at trustee area number one, the CVAP there is 52%, meaning that 52, above 50% of the people is a protected class voting, and they're above 50% threshold. Trustee area number two has a minority-majority district for the Hispanic Latino community at 57.5%. Trustee area three has a majority protected class area for the Hispanic Latino community at 60%. And trustee area number four has a minority-majority district at 55.2% for the Asian population. And trustee area number five has a majority-minority district at 56.2%. So if we look at what the CBRA is trying to accomplish and why we have to assess these boundaries, this is a perfect case scenario where both demographics, the two largest protected class demographics are well represented within the community as to why we suggest that you keep referring that. Thank you. And I'm here to answer any questions.
It's more of a comment than a question. I remember when we were going through these maps, we had about, I think, five or seven maps altogether.
Correct.
Including the ones that were submitted by the community. And it's a very delicate balancing act where you don't dilute one population or you don't get a super majority of one population. And to get the happy median, this map basically did that. The other thing that we liked about this map was that it had natural boundaries for most of the areas. I've seen maps from other school districts where, I use the word for lack of better word, gerrymandering, where the boundaries just go through and intersect each other and come back out. Whereas this had very clean set boundaries and was the reason we selected this map ultimately.
And if I can just touch on that and add to it, because I think we selected this map about two years ago. Is that what it was? It's not something that we've done about 10 years ago. It's something that was fairly recent. It was a lot of community involvement, there was meetings throughout the community. I remember I participated in a couple as a community member. So it's not something that has been done a long time ago, and it's fairly recent data.
I have a question about the page one, the variance. And so variance is a very important factor for the, the 5.4 in a 7.0 variance. What's the formula you got it from the area 12345?
So what, how we calculate the variance is that we take the total population and we divide that by the amount of trustees, in this case, five. So then we take the most populated area and the least populated area, and then we subtract those, and we divide it by the ideal population, which would give us the variance.
So this, for example, the 2020 census 7.0, you develop the 7.0 from
You develop the seven point zero from the area one, two, three, four, five in the the variance to get seven.
We divided from the most populated, so in this case would be trustee area one and then the least populated, which would be trustee area number two.
Oh, I see.
Yes, and then we divide that total, that that amount by the ideal population size, which is found on the demographic slide on slide five.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome and you guys are lucky ninety five percent of the districts that we've worked with have to redistrict. Have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you. The. Need a real call vote, Donna Freeman. Agnes Gonzalez.
I.
David Malkin. Eric Menegas.
I.
Kirishan I, motion carries. And the textbook adoption. Can I have a motion in the second to approve the adoption of the secondary mathematics textbook?
I'll move.
Donna move.
I'll second.
Mr. Malkin, second. Discussion, yeah, Donna.
I went online to check out the textbooks and I only know elementary math, so this was way beyond my thinking. But just to give you some ideas on the AP Calculus A B. They had calculus for AP, oh yeah, it was AP two E. They reviewed assignments, they listed communication grades, resources, class insights, also target the topics you need to study. There was an area to put things there, see which topics you know, ace your exam, announcements and my calendar. I thought that was very interesting and then on the AP Calculus B C book, chapter three, the derivative. This is just one of them, the derivative, a composite implicit and inverse functions, are you kidding me? Oh, these students are smart. It started with world population growth, chapter three project where they had to explore a basic model. To predict world population and examine its accuracy, listed objectives and showed examples. And then on the college algebra and trigonometry seventh edition. It said, welcome to my lab math and it had an area for past due assignments, current assignments, completed assignments. And just a thank you to the team of teachers that worked with these books to recommend them.
Yeah, this, taking you back on that. I really miss not doing these reviews in person where you have the math teacher there and you can talk to them and. Ask them, you know, why they selected this book and what, and they can go through the book and stuff, I really missed that process. But after watching that northern presentation and on the animated book. Our students are very bright from very beginning from the get go, so it doesn't surprise me they're at this level. At the, at this math level. We just have very outstanding students in our district.
Yeah. Any, any, I don't know. Record vote. Uh, Donna, you have more.
No, I'm ready.
All right, uh, rock, Donald Freeman.
I.
Agnes Gonzalez.
I.
David Malkin.
I.
Eric Menegas.
I.
Kirishan I, motion carries. And next again is another textbook approval and in motion in the second to approve the adoption of the engineering and architecture. And a construction technology textbook.
I'll move.
Donna move.
Oh, second.
With Menegas, second questions, comments, please, Donna.
Yes, this was before our last board meeting when they had the. To introduce the book, so on September twenty second with the textbook review, Rocky and Michael were there as I sign onto the Zoom link. The funding is coming from the District Career Technology Investment Grant. The classes available to take are Engineering Design Technology One, Architecture Design and Advanced Architecture Design. Construction Technology One, Constructive Technology Two, all sound very difficult to me. Michael Frosto has an industrial engineering background, teacher at Roland High School. He also did his student teaching at Roland High School. He explained all about these textbooks, they will be used in core classes. He works with several teachers like his students' math teachers and government teachers as well as AP and IP teachers. He also has the students that are at level one and are special needs in his classes. Math theory is taught as well as geometry terms. Engineering textbook has different reasons for being a great book. Some are how it links to all different regions and fields. What is a sketch and starting the and refining aspects of a model, three D printing more useful from the previous book. In the last textbook, it didn't have a lot of resources, so he had to get them on his own. This book has a lot of resources. The engineering design, this book is digital, you don't need specific software to use it. It is an intense book, there are forty four chapters and he has talked to. To the tenth and eleventh grade math teachers to see where the students are. This book will be divided into three years looking at the textbook breakdown. In the division of the sections, there is a floor plan, hand drawn, digital, two D architectural design. The classes will be based on the students' knowledge of them taking algebra or pre-algebra or basic math. He will adjust the pacing guide to the students. Since it has forty four chapters, he will plan on teaching fourteen chapters a year. The third year students will be building commercial design and continue their pathway using codes. Overall, it has more specific software compared to the old textbook. Students will be receiving a certificate when completing their pathway, which includes internship during their second year. And during their third year juniors and seniors are hired and may land a job for their future. All four books have precision exams to help with getting certified. He said he has a laser engraver that uses the best technology in his classroom. He also makes sure that the students have all the tools they need at home and in the classroom. This helps students complete projects at home. Kits at home are designed by the students, they have their own lockers in their classroom. Lastly, this week, they were working on how do you read an architect's scale? Also, it has extra learning opportunities, he said that the content is for all students to be successful. He said that these textbooks are more useful from the previous textbooks and has a broad appeal. He mentioned they had input in remodeling the snack bar at Roland High School, that is pretty impressive. And I want to thank him and whoever else was on the committee to approve these books with all that hard work the teachers do.
Take it, Donna. Any other question?
I did all that.
Just a comment.
And yes, yes.
Just a comment. Uh, with all this textbook adoption that we have for our children, for our students. They are prepared for college, I mean, this is like being a preparation for a higher level education. I I salute the teachers for adopting this textbooks, both math and this. Technology, graphics and carpentry, uh, you know, we need carpenters in this time and age. Construction and stuff, so they are ready for for college with this adoption of books.
Okay, no more comments or questions? That's our local vote. Donna Freeman.
I.
Agnes Gonzalez.
I.
David Malkin.
I.
Eric Menegas.
I.
Kirishan I, motion carries. The next item, seven D. Member motion in the second to approve the participation agreement between Roland Uni-Pascal District. And Southern California Edison.
I'll move.
Mr. Menegas move.
I second.
And as a second, any questions? Donna.
This is, this is wonderful that Southern California Edison will give us ten electric buses and set up the charging stations as well. And maintain them for no cost for ten years, that's very exciting.
Thank you, Donna.
And if I can just say, it's always the the district looking for many ways we can improve the the funding and the schools and and getting. Multiple benefits from it, so thank you.
Record vote, Donna Freeman.
I.
Agnes Gonzalez.
I.
David Malkin.
I.
Eric Menegas.
I.
Kirishan I, motion carries. Next item, seven E. Kind of motion in a second to approve the contract agreement between Roland Uni-Pascal District and Ewing Consulting.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mr. Menegas move and Donna a second. Donna. Any questions?
I just like, just like to say, I looked up this Ewing Consulting, very good credentials. Active participation in education and consulting both. Sounds like, it looks like a very good group.
Any other comments? Record vote, Donna Freeman.
I.
Agnes Gonzalez.
I.
David Malkin.
I.
Eric Menegas.
I.
Kirishan I, motion carries. Next item is the seven F. Can I have a motion in the second to approve? Twenty dollar per month increase. In the board monthly compensation stipend or three point nine three, seven percent effective December first, twenty twenty one. I need a move motion.
I move.
I'll second.
Donna second and. Agnes move. Any discussion?
This is very difficult, I remember in two thousand and eighteen, we had a big discussion about this and I'm like, no, no, we don't give ourselves rates, what is this? Even though it was twenty dollars. But then my fellow board members and everyone reminded me, we do gas, we do a lot of other things that people aren't aware of. So that that helps towards that, you know, when we drive to different events and things like that.
Any other comments? I have a comment, I know, I mean, twenty dollars. Um. I think we have seven for the board members, I I don't speak for everyone, but for me, it's not. For me, for rely on living and approving twenty dollars increase. I think we have confidence, I think the board, I have a confidence, the 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 committee would agree with twenty dollars increase to us. Because I. I have a kind as we are, we're doing satisfactory job to the community, so, so I I will. Agree with this for give us twenty dollars, it's embarrassing for us to give us twenty dollars. So, so I will give a try to put it on the agenda. Okay, so any other question?
It won't even cover gas for a month, going to it from different schools.
Yeah, okay, so, okay, then let's have a real call vote for this item, Donna Freeman.
I.
Agnes Gonzalez.
I.
David Malkin.
I.
Eric Menegas.
I.
Kirishan I, motion carries, thank you. Next item, seven G, can have a motion in the second to adopt the resolution AS twenty one twenty two zero eight. Intention to grant a estimate for electric vehicle charging station. Infrastructure to Southern California Edison for charge ready transport program.
I'll move.
Mr. Menegas move.
I'll second.
Donna Freeman's second. Discussion, any questions to this item? Record vote, Donna Freeman.
I.
Agnes Gonzalez.
I.
David Malkin.
I.
Eric Menegas.
I.
Kirishan I, motion carries. And next time, seven H, can have a motion in the second to adopt the resolution SO twenty one twenty two oh seven. Continuing Board of Education Authority to hold virtual meetings.
I move. I'll second.
Agnes move, right, Agnes move, and Donna second, right. Discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on that, um, you know, many several years ago, we we had a big discussion about videotaping our meetings. And the cost that was associated with it. And I think one of the positives out of the pandemic was the broadcasting of our meetings, like we have it now. Where people can go home, sit, sit down, have dinner with their family and tune in and see what's happening. And if they want, they could speak from the, you know, leisure of their home. And I just hope that we continue to do this ongoing. Forever, if we can videotape, then let's do this. Um, I know we do audio taping, but audio taping with a PowerPoint presentation is kind of difficult to follow. So I'm in, I'm all in favor of the. Live broadcasting, we have the equipment now, we're all set up to do it, let's do it.
Another question. Okay, record vote, Donna Freeman.
I.
Agnes Gonzalez.
I.
David Malkin.
I.
Eric Menegas.
I.
Kirishan I, motion carries. So next item is move to eight. Member motion to approve stipend expulsion. Oh, sorry, huh? Above one, seven I, right. The first reading, the border, the borders are being asked to bring for for the first reading and review the attached board policy. No action will be taken on this item this evening, this is for discussion only. Any, any comments on this item, Donna?
I feel like I'm like David now because I'm going to talk about a couple of them. BP six one two zero, the response to instruction and intervention. Um, I am glad to know that if a student needs counseling, they will receive it immediately. When the state students are making academic progress, this includes students that are failing in all their subjects, is that correct, Dr. Mitchell?
So your question is, are they failing all of their subjects? No, they do not need to be failing all of their subjects.
So the students not making academic progress means?
They could be not making academic progress in a subject.
Yeah, one or all or what, any?
It means they're not making academic progress in a subject, I I'm sorry.
That's okay, in a subject, okay. And then it says progress will be monitored, will you explain how this will happen?
Sure, I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Zamora. I'm going to pause for a second, we, Dr. Zamora, would you mind going to the mic?
So monitoring student achievement happens whether a student is not doing well in a subject or is doing well. We always monitor student achievement through multiple ways. This could be formative assessments and it can also be summative assessments and it can also be based on quantitative data. That is observational, so it just depends on what the student is struggling with. And the teacher needs to monitor to ensure that they can gauge the amount of student progress. So there is no one specific way, teachers have a a great number of ways of monitoring that. It could be monitoring the amount of homework a student is doing. It could be monitoring the amount of student of time that the student can sit and do something like silent reading. It just really depends, it's very individualized.
Can you stay up for a second because I want to ask you what will happen with students that are failing some or all of their classes? When they see F on the report card beside. So trying interventions and if it continues.
So this one again is very individualized, it depends on what we mean by. How this will happen, what will happen if a student is failing all of their classes, if a student is failing some of all of their classes. Again, it's individualized, there may be interventions that the teacher is trying in the class first before requesting an SST. So an SST can be requested by the classroom teacher, it can be requested by an instructional coach, it can be requested by the principal. And it can be requested by a parent as well, so the first. The first attempt is to have the teacher and try classroom interventions. Okay, I'm wondering if we need anything in there about students that are failing their classes that we said that we're going to do what you said in the policy.
So I think it's important to remember the role of a policy versus the administrative regulations or the actions by staff. So I I don't believe that it is necessary to be in a board policy. You know, that, that's the what and that we're going to have response to intervention.
Mm hmm. Okay, then would it be possible to share with the board the number of students that are failing in their subjects at each school and the grades they are in?
If that's an interest that the board has in us doing that research and presenting it in a way that the board can can. Get gain something for it, we're happy to, we do those reports. But we run them in in such a way that we would need to to rewrite and provide. additional explanations.
Do schools do that though?
Yes, absolutely.
We just get it from each school then and that way you won't have to do double?
We would not present it to the board in the same way that we work through the datas. So we would do some, I mean, but it is available. It is something that we check and Dr. Zamora and her team look at it regularly. We support and assist with our, for instance, we run the data for all of our high school students as we're, we're verifying, you know, on track for graduation, et cetera. Meeting with our high school principals, they in turn also with their teams. So we do run that data regularly, but I can share with you the way that we run it and what we look for would not be the way we would present it to the board.
Well, counselors check usually the grades correct.
Yes.
And so would they have a list of students that they have to see because they're failing? How many?
Yes.
And so that's just that number then?
Yes.
Would that be possible so that you don't have to do any extra work?
Yes, we could, I mean, we can, we, we can provide any information that you guys, as a board, whatever the board is interested in seeing, we are happy to provide it.
Because we're not going to put it in the policy. So I think it would be good idea to know how many students we're talking about that.
That's up to the board. The board can provide us with direction. It is, it is information that we look at.
Yeah, I can see where Ms. Freeman's coming from. But at the same time, as a board member, I'm more concerned about like the dashboard on the LCAP. And globally, you know, how are we doing as a district? If we get information by individual school site, I really don't know what we can do with that.
No, I'm talking about just the secondary schools.
Or even the secondary schools.
But if you're thinking about that, then those kids that are failing that move up, now our score goes up. Because we get graded on the students that improve.
Yeah, but, so we find out twenty students in one school is not doing well. What do we do with?
What happens with, is it next quarter? Is it fifteen? Then I'll be thrilled. You know, I want to see the progress of those students getting better.
Wouldn't we see that on the dashboard?
It doesn't state the students that are getting out.
Not individual students, but overall.
And, and Ms. Freeman, that information that you just described, like twenty students to fifty two, you'd be thrilled. It does, it's a, it's a different set of disaggregating that data because it might be twenty and fifteen, but it could be a different fifteen. It could be the same fifteen. It could be, so there's, the raw number may or may not show you what you're interested. It's very similar to the conversation we've had around foster youth.
And the dashboard also only does language arts and math. What about all those other classes they're taking? That's the only thing. Okay, but if you're not interested, that's fine. I don't know how the board feels. I just feel it's very important that these kids don't go, I'd like the number to keep coming down, whatever the number is. Maybe it's only three. I don't know. I mean, that would be wonderful, but.
I, I think as a board, we need to have expectations on the, on the cabinet to monitor school student progress and teachers' progress and present that to the, to us as, as a overview. Which Dr. Zamora has been doing lately. We've been getting more and more information on a quarterly basis. And I think that's, I think that's what's been important.
That's all I wanted to, is like a report on that. Okay. And then lastly on that, I think the last two paragraphs are very important, but to not delete them. But if CSBA recommends to delete them, then we will. And then I want to talk about one other policy in case anyone else wants to talk about a policy. No? Okay. Policy six, one, six, four point five student success teams. Now, when I taught, we referred to student that was having problem with behavior or academic or whatever. And then after that, there was the student study team, SST meeting to decide what to do. Let's do intervention. Let's do something like that. So I read that it says on the second paragraph, last sentence states may include a determination by the district as the what, as to whether the SST shall be convened for an individual student. I think if a parent or guardian or teacher, et cetera, filled out the paperwork on a student that is struggling academically or behaviorally, et cetera, we should have an SST meeting on them. And apparently, um, right now, that's not happening. I think it, it shouldn't be May. It should be, we should have it. That's just what I wanted to bring up. I don't know how you guys feel about it.
I, I think it's a good thing, but now we are forced to do it, right? We would be forcing the district to do it. And if there isn't, the, if the parents don't want to do it, then what do we do?
No, 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 these are only people that request, request something like this. This is happening to my child. So can you look into it? So usually, I thought there was an SST meeting for everyone that turned, because the SST people will decide, oh, let's do interventions. Oh, oh, we got to go to a counselor right away or something like that. So instead of May, I would rather say that they always should be an SST meeting just to decide. And maybe they could say, oh, no, let's just wait in one more month or they, they, they're a component of a whole bunch of different, the teacher, the parent, whatever.
I'm, I'm thinking what Dr. Zamora said earlier, that each case is individual. And it's not a cookie cutter for every student that's not doing well. And.
All it is, we're not talking about being tested for special ed yet or anything like that. The student study team is a team of people that say, let's help this child. This is what we should do. So if a teacher fills out a whole form for an hour to like, oh, that need help in this, I tried this, I feel like it shouldn't be, might have an SST meeting or May. Let's say that they will have an SST meeting because that person is saying, I need help with this student or child or something. But May means that they might not meet on that student. That's how I look at it. I talked to Dr. Mitchell about it.
What would be the reasons why we wouldn't do it? So we have May in there for a reason. Why, why, why would you want it? So you don't have to do it.
Part of it would be analyzing what has been happening in the classroom. So if a student is new, let's give an example, student is new to a third grade class and they're an English learner. And they have very limited English. From the beginning, they may be struggling, correct? And so jumping into an SST hasn't given the student the opportunity to gain language and the opportunity for the classroom teacher to try different strategies. The research shows that it takes about anywhere between six and ten weeks of an intervention for it to show an impact. And so May, it's because it allows for that flexibility and giving the teacher the opportunity to decipher what exactly this student needs and try that out. It doesn't mean that it won't happen, but it gives the opportunity for other things to happen first.
So at the SST meeting, that's not the meeting that says, let's try interventions? Who's, who's saying, let's try interventions?
So we're saying about the teacher. The teacher is saying, okay, I need to try different interventions. If the teacher feels like they need further input and engagement from the rest of the school staff, then it's when it goes to an SST and they may provide much more intense interventions before there's even conversation about testing for further evaluation. So it is, it is a team that will discuss other interventions, but it involves outside support beyond the teacher. So if the teacher says, I've tried everything, I've tried it for two, three months, it's not working. I'm recommending an SST, then they follow up with an SST.
They follow up how?
They, they request an SST and an SST.
I couldn't hear you.
They, they request an SST and an SST.
And then they would have an SST meeting? If the teacher's struggling with this child?
If the teacher feels like their interventions are not producing the outcomes they want. Yes.
I think what you're saying basically is that it's not like a light switch where you turn the switch on and SST needs to occur. That teacher has a, a flexible window in which they try interventions and depending on the success or a lack of success, then they can go to an SST.
Correct.
But it's not, it's an on off type thing.
And, and even throughout the interventions that the teacher is trying, other support staff from the school, like the instructional coach, the principal may help the teacher with creating some of those interventions and coming up with different ideas.
Okay, I have one more thing, but before that, so is everyone okay with May instead of changing it to need an SST? I think that they should all be an SST if the, the party is coming forward saying, I'm having trouble with this child that we should meet. Just want to know how you guys feel.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with May.
You're fine with May, everybody?
Yep.
Okay, the next one is after the SST meeting, I think there should be a time limit when the interventions are tried, which you just mentioned, six to eight, ten weeks, but I talked to Dr. Mitchell. She told me six to eight weeks. Then meet again to see if they are working and if not. Then the student should be tested to see if they qualify for special ed or get the help they need, depending on what the SST believes, what is best for the student. If we wait too long, over a month, a student gets farther and farther behind. I'm suggesting that we put a time limit like within thirty days to meet again. Because now the student's getting farther and farther behind. The reason why the student was referred in the first place was, was struggling. And now they're going to struggle for another six, eight or ten weeks. I'd like to put a time limit on it. I talked to Dr. Mitchell and about it.
It's not that I disagree with you. It's just that I, I just feel that a board policy needs to define the parameters and the environment in which education occurs. We're getting into procedure now.
Well, this means that if somebody has a referral, what if interventions last six months? Are you okay with that?
Well, I don't think it's up to us to determine procedure.
Yeah, but you're saying it's okay because there's no time in here. It could take a year then before they, now they're in another grade and they're still behind, but nothing was done. That's all I.
I don't know if that's accurate assumption.
Because I feel the policy should, if we're, if this is our guide, that we need to make sure that the kids are doing something, but if you're okay with it, it's okay.
This is a policy, this is not a.
Regular.
The policy is to.
Policy, if you put a time there. It should not, it's up to the, um, to the staff.
To make sure it's not that. I just think that's long, six to eight or ten weeks. You don't think it's long?
I understand that you feel that it's a long period of time and it is a long period of time in which for, for you to see a student that's struggling. But there is no miracle and in four weeks, you don't see significant change or difference. So, you know, when you, when you're trying to make even any lifestyle changes and you, you see small bits of progress, but you're not seeing whether or not this is something that's going to stick or work. So when you think about any type of change, it usually takes, you know, thirty days in which to change a habit, et cetera. And so, no, I, I.
So would you happen to know the percent of, if you wait six, eight weeks, whatever it is, how many of those kids, they improved and you didn't have to do anything about how many? Because all the ones that I have had, none of them did. Because the teacher saw that it might have been a learning disability or something. That's why I'm asking. How many do you think changed and said, okay, we don't need to go on with an IEP or whatever?
I don't have that data with.
But would you say ten percent, fifty percent, zero?
Not going to guess.
Okay, because I don't think it's that many. I mean, I, I don't think kids in, if they're struggling so badly, they really need the help. And now you're going to try interventions for six to eight, ten, ten weeks. It will probably will not work. Hopefully they will, but that's what I would like to know. Okay. It's up to the board. If you don't want to put a timeline on it, that's fine. So you're fine with it, how it is, everybody? Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it then.
Any more comment?
No, I just wanted to just reiterate that these board policies are then translated into policies and procedures. And that's where that should be addressed.
And that's what I'm talking about, the procedure. I think it's too long.
We don't. We're, we're talking about board policy right now.
Okay.
No, no more. So are we ready to move to the next item? Okay. Okay, next, let's move to item eight, eight A, the, uh, in the motion to approve the stipulate expulsion of student twenty one, twenty two, oh, four effective November nineteen, twenty twenty one with the placement at an alternative learning program outside of the rolling in fast good district.
I'll move.
Donna move.
I'll second.
Mr. Menegus, second. Any questions? Record votes, Donna Freeman.
I.
Agnes Gonzalez.
I.
David Malkin.
I.
Eric Menegus.
I.
Kerry Chen, I, motion carries. Next item is eight B. We have a motion and a second to approve the expulsion of student twenty one, twenty two, oh, five, effective November nineteen, twenty twenty one with a placement at an alternative learning program outside of a unit, rolling in the fast good district.
I'll move.
Donna move.
I second.
And this second. Any questions? Discussion? Record vote, Donna Freeman.
I.
Agnes Gonzalez.
I.
David Malkin.
I.
Eric Menegus.
I.
Kerry Chen, I, motion carries. All right, let's go to consent calendar. The, can, can, uh, we need, uh, we need to approve the items in consent calendar with the exception of any items that were a poll or a separate discussion in action. It's nothing poll. Uh, any of the motion?
I'll move.
Donna move. And a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Menegus, a second. Record vote, Donna Freeman.
I.
Agnes Gonzalez.
I.
David Malkin.
I.
Eric Menegus.
I.
Kerry Chen, I, consent calendar, carry. Goodness, Adams Conference Section, the Board of Education will be holding three public hearing at a December nine, regular board meeting at six P M. The community is welcome to attend and provide input both in person and virtually. The first public hearing will be to receive input on the intention to grant estimate for electric vehicle charging system infrastructure to Southern California Edison pursuant to California Education Code seventeen, five, five, eight. The next item, the next public hearing will be to receive inputs on proposed energy conserva- conservation services with the Climate Tech LLC pursuant to California Education Code forty two, seventeen point ten and forty two, seventeen point eighteen. The next, I'm ten C. The last public hearing will be to receive input on the Energy Conservation Services Contract pursuant to California Education Code forty two, seventeen point ten and forty two, seventeen point one, eight. For additional information, including how to provide input during these public hearing, please contact the Administrative Services Office. Okay, next, the comments of the board. We start with Mr. Malkin this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chen.
Thank you.
First, I want to say that I think having differences of opinion is educational and it helps us grow. And I think what we had discussed on the board here is a good example of that, but even a better example where the families that came tonight and spoke. And I'm so proud of them, the way they came, presented themselves professionally and expressed their concerns. And I've seen what's been happening across the nation at, at these meetings. And I thought, I, I'm really proud of our families and our community. And I can fully understand why they have concerns. And certain things are outside of our parameters. As Mr. How, how I pointed out, that we just don't have control over. And but I still respect the fact that they came and shared that they're a bit opinion. And hopefully they'll redirect it to their elected officials, meaning the state legislature that has the opportunity to change some of these, you know, rules. But we have to follow them at our district level. We don't have a choice. So, but I'm so proud of them. Secondly, congratulations to the Family Resource Center for their twenty fifth anniversary. The F R C has always been very close to my wife and me. We used to spend a lot of hours down there volunteering. And since the pandemic, we just haven't been able to get down there. We're old and we have medical conditions. And this is the biggest audience I've ever been in my life in the last year and a half. And believe me, I was sweating up here. So I really respect what they do and how much they do. The F R C has partnered with our Qantas Club. The F R C has partnered with our Qantas Club since twenty ten, doing heart and soul, which you mentioned. And we will be doing heart and soul again in February. I coordinate that. And tomorrow and early part of next week, I'll be sending letters out to many people asking for donations, twelve dollars buys a pair of shoes for one child. And I run this thing strictly with donations from different organizations and groups. So I'll be sending letters out. She mentioned on the beginning of the Family Resource Center when they remodeled them about having a need for dental care. Has anybody ever wondered, you know, when the dentist puts you way back in the chair that the chair doesn't tip over? Well, when they remodeled it, they only had room for they had room for two chairs, but they only had money to buy one chair. So my nature is to go out and find another chair and I found one and got one donated. It was in Covina. It was a dentist that was redoing his office and he donated it, but we had to pick it up. So a friend of mine, Eric Rojas, said, that's no problem. I'll help you. Well, the reason that chair doesn't tip over is because the base weighs over five hundred pounds. And we tried everything to get that thing out of that storage room and we couldn't get it out. So then we went to Sam's Club and bought some dollies and put that underneath it and the wheels just pancaked out.
Oh, my goodness.
So we figure how are we going to do this? Well, luckily he had worked for a local corporation here in the city of industry and we got a forklift. And we use that forklift to get it into the truck. Well, getting it from the truck into the Family Resource Center was another experience. And I'll never forget that day. It took us about eight hours to get that dental chair in there, but we finally got it in there. And then somebody from the community hooked it up, so they had two chairs for a while. I've always enjoyed the presentations by the students, especially, you know, today from Northam Elementary. They are so good, I tell you. That book, when they did the animated book, I looked over at Derek, Eric, and I said, where's the publisher? We have a little free lending library at our house and I'd love to put that book in there. I think it had a great, you know, lesson, life lesson to learn. So I'm just really proud of our students and how well they do. I attended the Zoom meeting yesterday with the K kids at Roland Elementary. They had a takeover meeting by UCLA Circle K. Circle K is the college club level for Qantas. And they took it over and it was a it was a great meeting. They played two games. One was this or that. Which is, do you like pineapples on pizza or do you like pineapple by itself? And it was this or that. And there'd be little circles showing you how many of each student wanted it. What they wanted. And at the end, so they showed individually what people wanted. So they got to learn about other kids and their peers. They got to learn from them, what they like. Dodgers or angels, things like this. So they got to learn about the other things. But then at the end, they had a big Prometheus Board, as it was called. Everything was being done on that Prometheus Board. And they had all these little circles there. And now Tammy B, who is the teacher there, she says, now we have to work together as a team, how that we learn from each other. And you have to take those circles and make it in the shape of a heart. Or make it in a shape of a circle or make it in the shape of a K. And now the kids all had to work together to move their own little circle into a shape of something. So she went from individuals to working as a team. And this is a great experience for the kids. The kids were having a great time. And then they also, the UCLA kids gave them the history of Qantas. And at the very end, they played Kahoot. And which I've a lot of us have done. And the Kahoot questions were on the history of Qantas. So I showed how many kids were listening, how many weren't and how many, you know, learned from what was taught. I too reviewed the math books. You got farther than I did. I looked at the table of contents and I knew I was lost. I was over my head in those things. And then when I started looking at some of the chapters, I said, I I have no idea what they're talking about. I want to thank Alex Flores, Mr. Flores, for linking me in to the Roland High Drama. It was great then watching the drama presentation and he linked me in. I was able to do it at home through the internet. Subject matter was very mature and I just thought it was great. The acting and the storylines and everything and the auditorium looked fantastic when you watched it from afar. And I want to give a shout out to Roland High School students. We looked at the books for architecture and building. Well, Roland High, Roland Heights Women's Club got materials donated to build little free lending libraries. And the first one was being is being was hosted by the Marcos, Marco and Donna Robles family. And the kids at Roland High School built the library. And they were constantly calling the Marcos family saying, what should we put on the outside? How big should we put it? What should we make the window like? And they kept telling them, no, no, you're the designer, you're the builder, we're just the host. And they totally had to design the whole thing and they did a fantastic job. The artwork, the graphics on it were just beautiful. And the library itself, and they installed it in the ground on a post and everything. I mean, it took a lot of work and know how how to how to build that. So I just like to call out the students, Natalie Chang, Madison Hang, Yurera Wu, Natalie T. Ethan Chen, Charlene Poon and Mike T, were the students who built it. They have materials to build two more, so they're looking for two more host homes. And the students are eager to build another one, so we'll see how it goes. And finally, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. This is the time of year when we become busy with all our holiday tasks that need to be completed. I ask everyone to please take time to think of those who are not as fortunate or who have lost loved ones and need to reach out with a helping hand. The gift of caring, love is just a gift that you can give anybody that that's greatly appreciated. And we can all afford to do that at this time of year. And I wish everybody happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Malkin. Mr. Vanegas.
Thank you. So as usual, I do want to thank and acknowledge the student presenters tonight, both Isaac Isaacs from Northam and Brisa. Also the flip void card from Gabriel. So he was nice to hear his voice. He wasn't here, which is fine, but I think, you know, having him presented here in his own voice is fabulous. Pedro from Nogales and he from Roland Heights, Andrea from Santana. And then even the the speaker tonight, the young gentleman named Jonathan is the parent that brought him in. Hearing his voice is is important. And and I share this every time when I come up here. I truly don't believe any of these kids really want to come up and present. It's probably they're terrified. And I'm not doing it to be mean to them, but I think it's really good for them. And it's a growth opportunity. So I had a chance to participate in the career pathways this week or last week. And I was put in the engineering breakout room and Jaden and John were presenting on mechanical engineering. And in the breakout room, there was two mechanical engineers that worked in the industry and Jaden and John. And they got to present to to their to these folks and they did an amazing job. And so and both Jaden and John sent me a thank you for being in the room and being there. And they both said they really were nervous about presenting out and just it was a comfortable environment. And they got validated of their research of what they had done was factual and validated by people in the industry. So so here are these students that were fearful going in and nervous to present to people in industry. At the end, we're like very grateful and they've really grown from it. So that was a a nice, nice thing. And one of them made a comment towards me. It was a funny comment because he said, I've never met an engineer with a personality, which was a funny thing. I was like, okay. But it was, it was a good growth opportunity. So so I thanked him as a as back. You talked about having all the family members that came out and and talked tonight and I really appreciate them all being respectful and and observing time. And we all do have a differences of opinion. This board has a differences of opinion. I mean, I think that's what makes it stronger. So as a community, it's good for everyone to share. Like the students that came up, like the parents that come up, it is good. We are paying attention. And and, you know, we'll move forward from there, but it is good to hear from from different perspectives. So. Thank you, Mr. Chan.
Thank you. Donna.
Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I just want to welcome Wendy and our new VP at Santana in their new roles. And also congratulations to Family Resource Center twenty fifth anniversary. You know, when I started on the board, I heard Family Resource Center this and that. I had no idea what it was. And after all these years, they do so much. Let's see, it was a great presentation that Miriam did for Family Resource Center. And also the educator effectiveness block rant plan presentation was great. So happy we have this. Thank you, Alex. And education services and all the teams that was part of that. And our U S D two thousand twenty census assessment presentation was very thorough and informative. I want to mention the Family Resource Center because they sent us all these bracelets. And I want to thank the Family Resource Center for these this bracelet, which states, United, we stand against bullying. And on the other side says, treat others the way you want to be treated. I did that in my thirty six years of teaching and also told my students this often. I always treated my students how I would want to be treated. I wore this bracelet throughout the month of October, which was bullying prevention month. They do so much at Family Resource Center. They have great programs. I wanted to mention them. These are posted on their website. Food distributions, which Miriam mentioned, College Connect, Go Go Grandparents Workshop, Secondary Success Workshops, Tech Bytes Parent Workshop, Tutoring for High School Students, Wellbeing Wednesday Events, Virtual Calming Room and Fresh Start. That wasn't even mentioning the libraries that she created at apartment houses around the neighborhood. They also do more. Thank you, Family Resource Center, for all you do for our students and community. Their tireless compassion and hard work are evident by their entire staff and of course, Miriam and Kim. The Greek mythology play at by Nogales High School students. First, the Visual Performing Arts Center at Roland High School is so beautiful, just like David was mentioning. The Nogales High School students are very talented. They did an outstanding job. I enjoyed it very much. We laughed a lot. All the hard work paid off for a very successful play. The connections to the future, the twenty seventh year. I wasn't sure what to expect virtually. The speakers did a great job. Then we went into breakout rooms and there was time to attend too. My first one was on pathology. These two students did a fantastic job. Did you know the salary of a pathologist is two hundred eighty four thousand eight hundred and ten dollars yearly? My second breakout room was about composers. All students presented very well. All the hard work by teachers and students was very evident. Fantastic job. I enjoyed it very much, but I must say I did miss having this in person and walking around and listening to the students' presentations, which were always excellent. Hopefully next year we'll have it in person. On the consent calendar, we just want to mention a few things that we approved. We approved sixth grade outdoor science school field trips for nine of our schools. What a great experience for our students. I'm thrilled that they will have this opportunity to learn outside of the school setting. And Giano students have the opportunity to attend an outdoor science school in Catalina. Very exciting for those students. Again, I'm thrilled that these students will have this great opportunity. I want to say have a happy Thanksgiving, enjoy your days off and it's time to be thankful for so many things. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Anna.
Hello, good evening. I would like to congratulate Family Resource Center's twenty fifth anniversary. You have done a wonderful job that with annual holiday gift basket and all that stuff, it really helps for Thanksgiving to those who are needing the help. For the parents who came and the students who came to speech, to speak in front of everybody. I'd like to thank you for coming in and like Mr. Vanegas said, being respectful, because we know you care. You care for your students, you care for your children and you are paying attention for what the government is telling us. Unfortunately, we have well, we have to follow rules at times. I'd like to congratulate the 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 Assistant Principal of Santana, Christina Canales, of course, Wendy Lassard. For their for their employment. Welcome to Roland Unified School District. I attended Rory Moore Elementary on October fifteen of Live Wax Museum. And was so impressed with the work of both the staff and the students. It was so nice to finally be able to see the works of the students in person. I also attended the Voices Two Thousand at Roland High School on November twelve. And I would like to congratulate the teachers and the students for an excellent job. I would also like to extend my congratulations to Connected the Future for continuing to excel in their work for our C T students. I have been an advocate and I participated in the business intern program since it started. To F R C again, thank you for the October bullying preventive bracelet. I will wear it with pride to stand in unity with what it represents. I would like to thank the city of La Pente for inviting the school board to salute the veterans in the city of La Pente. Carrie Chan and I was able to meet with Senator Susan Rubio and Assemblywoman Bianca Rubio, Mayor of La Pente and all the dignitaries of the neighboring community. They extend their thanks to Roland Unified School District for doing an excellent job for the students around in their communities. I would also like to thank former Mayor Mary Sue of Walnut for inviting the school board to Pacific Palms to promote a book launch by Belinda Lee. The Asian community leaders recognized how Roland Unified School District has helped the students and congratulated us for being innovative learning school district in the USA. Eric Vanegas, Carrie Chan and I are so proud and honored to represent our Roland Unified School District in the Asian community. And lastly, I would like to thank to greet everybody, happy Thanksgiving. We will have a week of rest and time to spend with your family. Treasure them, cherish them as you sit at the table and share the peace that you will have. We are one of the lucky ones who can do this. There are people who are not without their families or away from their families. But if you are with your families, do please treasure the family that you have sharing that food, that turkey. And it's a good, it's a good memory. And I'm looking forward to my C S B A conference in December. It's my first, it's my first year, so I'm looking forward to learn a lot and to be with my governing board team here who had helped me this year. Thank you very much and good evening.
Thank you, Anna.
Again, this year I attend the connection to the future. I enjoyed it every year that event. And I joined two break rooms this year, virtual again. The first one I joined was the music teacher. One of the three students wants to be a music teacher. It happened to me recently, a month ago. I love music myself and I have a lot of love in music. Just happened a month ago in October and and I was listening to the one of the most important music competition in Poland, in Warsaw, it was the a shop and international piano competition. And this year is supposed to be had the last year, but the because of this year, it's a five years. And then the music area, everyone pay attention to this. This year, the winner was a Asian Canadian of friends, Paris born, Asian pianist. And the first thing I heard, I never heard of that young pianist, but the first thing I Google is not him. I Google his teacher. So I, the value of the music teacher I valued it more than than a performer. So I share with the the students and and the the goal, you want to be a music teacher, it's a very influential job, is very influential. And if the music. And if the music teacher or any teacher is not, if for a performer, and it just influences the audience, his or her audience. But if a teacher, you produce many, many outstanding performers, then influence is multiplied many, many times. So I'm very happy to see these students have the goal to be a music teacher. And the second breakout room I attend was SpaceX. And there was the, the three senior students once has a goal to learn more about space. And that was one of the area I'm interested also in this space. Space is a new frontier for the, for that generation, for the, for the, for next generation. This new frontier involves so much. There's so much for them to learn. There's so much for them to explore. And there's so much values in space. So I share with them what I learned from SpaceX and the future space activities. So not only rockets, not only is space, including space law. For example, the Artemis Court is new, because space is no law, no law before, because everybody. But in the future, we have more than 10,000, so pretty soon we have more than 10,000 new satellites will be on orbit. There's a lot, so you have a law. So there's a lot of area the, this new generation can explore. So I attended two breakout rooms. I enjoyed talking to them, and they both room gave me an excellent presentation and show their, what they have learned and show their goals. So this very successful event, the Connect to the Future for the seniors. They are about to complete their K-12 education and about to set their career goal and pursue their future. So that was a very successful, enjoyed it very much. And I attend on 11/11 on Thursday for Veterans Day, as we attended the the veteran, we honor the veterans in the City of La Puente. And remember, last board meeting, I was, I lettered the pledge allegiance. And I mentioned, I can ask a question from the community. I mentioned, we honor soldiers, sailors, airmen, and I mentioned guardian. Some people asked me, what is guardian? And so he wants me to, to share with it. The guardian is the service member of the newly formed Space Force. So we, the service member from Army becomes soldiers, and from Navy becomes sailors. From Air Force, we become airmen. And a new branch of the Armed Forces, the Space Force, they are guardians. So that's the explanation how we call the service members. So we don't forget, we have the fourth branch of the Armed Forces now. So we honor the veterans. I service, I serve at Marine Corps. I was a second lieutenant in American Allied Forces, Republic of China, which is Taiwan. So I fully, I have a feeling, I have a same, I fully understand why, how the, when you serve at the military or serve as a uniform member, service member, and how much you need to commit yourself for sacrifice. The first day, we put on a uniform, we have committed self, we some, we may sacrifice my life, that's for sure. And also, the families and the friends may all need to be have sacrificed their, 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 their time in life because of my service. So honoring the service members in Veterans Day. The, that's, that's that's a very important thing for me to do, so. So on the 11/11, I attend the Veteran State Ceremony, so I was, and I met other people there too. And on 18, I attend the Archie CCC, Roland Heights Coalition Council meeting. I was the, I was representing the board. I made the report. I share with the audience three items. We, the number one is the Roland Unified School District won a innovative school by school board, a school district by that last month. And the, and also the and also I announced the CBLC members, and we need more applicants to fill two positions. And our COVID-19 resignation for five to 11-year-old children, the opportunity, and announced the time and the date on Archie CCC. And I'm a Cal SSD, California Suburban School District representative on the board, and I received information from the, from the, from COSS SSD. And end of the year, they have the priority. The, our COSSD is the advocate, the, in Sacramento for the issues related to education. They were presenting the 260 school districts, suburban districts, about 2.6 million students. So this very, very strong body of the advocate. The I received the items for the priority, for 2022 priority this year. There are about 16 items, so I will send it to, I received it a few days ago. I will send it to Brandy. So if anyone is interested, you can share with you for the COSSD priorities. And finally, my daughter Joy asked me to pass her thank you to the board for allow me to attend her wedding. I told her, the board have to approve the switch at the time for last board meeting. And we enjoyed meeting. That was good. Thank you. So she wanted me to say thank you to the board. And and finally, happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your Thanksgiving time, and share your love with anyone who needed it. And have a good night. Thank you. So meeting adjourned, I need a motion, and the second to adjourn the meeting.
I move. Agnes moves.
I'll second.
Donna, second. Ro Corvo, Donna Freeman.
Aye.
Agnes Gonzalez.
Aye.
David Melkin.
Aye.
Eric Benegas.
Aye.
Carrie Chen.
Aye.
Motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 8:45. Thank you very much, and good night.